I call the June 24th Forest Lake Area School Board meeting to order. Please rise with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance is to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Member clerk, please recall.
Member Corcoran, here. Member Corcoran is here. Member Caddo?
Here.
Caddo is here. Member Olson?
Here.
Member Olson is here. Member Rayfield? Member Rayfield is absent. Member Tyson?
Here.
Member Tyson is here. Member Peterson?
Here.
Member Peterson is here. And member Luthner is here.
This time I've entertained a motion to approve tonight's agendas.
Motion seconded.
A motion is seconded, any discussion changes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Move on to scheduled, unscheduled visitors. Did we have anyone for the listening session?
We did not have anyone for the listening session.
Then we will move on to student achievement. Forest Lake High School Principal Jim Culver.
Thank you Chair Peterson, Superintendent Massing, and the rest of the school board. It's always an honor to come, talk to the school board, and give us our student achievement report for the year. It's even better that we can do it in person without masks on and have guests come and speak to you. It gives me a little life. I got a little tired of talking on Google meets. Today, we're going to talk about our Forest Lake area high school and our college and career readiness. It fits right into our strategic plan. As you know, the district has worked really hard on putting together what I would say is one of the top strategic plans in our area. Everything that we do goes back to this plan. And this specifically focuses on excellence in career college and future preparedness, goal number four, developing and enhancing each student's academic, technical, and professional skills to equip them in identifying and preparing themselves for their career path. That career path, as I have talked about for the last three or four years, is not just about college, it's about career and tech ed as well. We have done a lot of work having that pendulum swing back to the middle, having students choose a career path that really fits them, knowing that not every student is going to go to a four-year college, that there are tons of opportunities out there in career and tech ed as well. We do have our Ranger Dual, our Ranger U Dual Credit and Certification Program. We've come up with a couple of different logos. You'll see the Ranger U up in the right-hand corner. Anytime you see that in our registration materials or our stuff that we hand out, that means there's college credit attached to those classes. And at the high school right now, we have 43 different college credit-bearing courses. We have 12 CIS courses, 15 dual-credit courses, and 16 AP courses at the high school. That covers 12 departments. We have 15 departments in the high school. So 12 of our departments have college-bearing courses within them. The ones that do not right now, actually, we only have two that do not, FI Ed and our special ed department. We've also been working really hard with equal-opportunity schools. As you know, closing the achievement gap is something that we're working on across the nation and especially at the state. And Forest Lake High School is no different. And we've really been working on our marginalized populations with students that do not see themselves in those previous courses that I just mentioned. They don't see themselves taking CIS courses because students like them are not in them. So we have a bunch of outreach efforts that we are doing to close that gap. And as you can see from this chart, this is from equal-opportunity schools. This is 90% of our, 99% of next-year student enrollment. We have 717 students that have signed up for either an AP course, AP and occupational relation, or dual-credit course, or just a dual-credit course. If you look on the, where the black line goes across all the way on the far right, that is our white students. So our middle class to high-income white students, 54% of them are signing up for those classes. And as you follow that across, and this is something that we're super proud of, our black African-American students are out registering our white students in those courses. That is a huge game. Our Asian students are at par with what our white students are doing. We have a lot of work to do with our Hispanic students. And we also have a lot of work to do in our low-income areas. The one that is most interesting to me, if you look at our Asian students, our low-income students are actually registering for those courses at a higher rate than the high-income students. This is just a marker for us to monitor every year. We take this data at the beginning of the year, and then we also take it at the end of the year. These are registered students, so we will see once the year gets going how many of those students actually follow through and take those courses. The other piece that we have worked really hard at doing, because we know not everybody is headed for college, these are certification programs that we have at the high school. There's 12 different certification programs that students can get after they take courses. Certified Nursing, Emergency Medical Responder, we've all heard stories about our students that have gone through the EMT program. Some of them end up going to medical school, some do not. Some go right in an ambulance. My son's for one. He has a degree from the University of Northwestern, and he's working for a line of medical right now in one of their ambulance rigs. We have students all over the metro. Some of these others are newer to us, we don't have a lot of stories with, and I'm not going to take the thunder away from the two people that are following up after me because they have some specific stories that will point out some of these certifications. With that, we have done a lot of work with our career and tech ed coordinator, Mike Maron, who's sitting behind me, and our college and career readiness coordinator, Molly Bonnet. These positions were added back to the high school when we passed our levy. Okay? I cannot do, the high school cannot do what it's doing without these two phenomenal people working behind the scenes. They are the rubber that meets the road. They're the ones that get all of the work done. It's easy for me to sit at 10,000 feet and say, hey, we need to do this and we need to do that. Without the support of these two, that would not happen. With that, I'm going to hand it off to Mike and Molly so they can show you some of the work that they're doing to support that goal number four.
Unfortunately, I can't say the two of us are as funny as the sitcom, but we'll give it our best shot here. So I think increasingly at the high school, we're aware that we need to do a better job of preparing our students for the current labor market. And there's a real significant disconnect in the labor market where either there is cases of underemployment, people are educated but are not finding employment, or there's a skills gap and people don't have the skills that employers are requesting. So with that in mind, we're really doing a lot to intentionally help our students focus on some of these questions. What type of lifestyle do you hope for yourself? What do you, how do you want to spend your day? What kind of income do you hope to have? And then from there, identify or work to identify some careers of interest that could support that lifestyle. Once those questions are at least initially answered, and of course, we know that students are going to change and evolve as they should, but the idea is just to give it initial thought, then what path is best for you to help meet your career goals? And so we're consistently talking to students about how many career goals can be met through apprenticeship, college, military, and/or work in some cases. So we know that the best way to help students try to start thinking about these difficult questions that isn't maybe inherent to them, they don't immediately care to think about these all the time, is through their coursework every day, through events that we host at the high school, communications both to students and families, and then of course, individual meetings. Sometimes that's really what students want most of all, is just to sit down and talk it through. So we have our career exploration framework here, and we know that absolutely the most important thing is that all of our students have a really strong academic foundation. And we also know that this is met through all of our AP and CIS and core courses that Jim just referred to. We hope that as we continue this work, there will be some career information that will be increasingly shared with students, and not just our CTE courses, but also our core academic area. So from there, we know that kids will benefit from developing technical skills through their CTE coursework and professional skills. We often hear from employers how the most important are those professional skills, work ethic, time management, problem-solving, communication, and we do some of that work with resume building and interviewing skills. And then of course, for those that are increasingly focused, we want them to participate in some sort of capstone internship, job shadow, career conversation. So throughout that journey, Ranger Connect and a platform that we use, Zello, is there to help inform students along the way. So as you all know, Ranger Connect is now a credit-bearing class. Students have the opportunity to earn a quarter credit each year, so it essentially gives them an extra credit in their schedule to potentially afford them some wiggle room. Some of the main things that we do in Ranger Connect is to utilize that platform, Zello, that we have. I'll talk a little bit more about that. Again, some more of that professional skill development for our ninth and 10th graders, we're maybe focusing a little bit more on the social-emotional learning side. And for our juniors, we're asking that all juniors participate in either a job shadow or career conversation. So Zello is that tool that is comprised of assessments that students can learn about what careers might be a good fit for them, their learning style, their personality style. They can kind of just develop an overall portfolio for themselves. There are lessons for each grade, and then other tools such as the resume builder. This is impossible to see, I realize, but this would be a snapshot of one of our students' portfolios. So at any time, a student can look and be reminded of how, what their learning style is, what their personality style. And if you look at the bottom there, you'll see there are top 10 career matches based on, for the student likely, their assessments that they took, and also any other careers that they may be found along the way and found interesting, and they can go ahead and like those and refer back to them. Each career has a significant profile, which gives all sorts of information, salary information, demand information, and then it also provides education and training information. So it kind of backwards designs students through the process and then how they can receive that education and training. So of course, all this work is very much driven by our career wheel. And it's not just Forest Lake's career wheel, this is the career wheel used by the state and frankly, for many states across the country. So as you are all well aware, the middle school has just gone through a redesign process that was also largely informed by this career wheel. So this career wheel now appears on doors all around the building, it's featured in all sorts of communications to our students. So they're kind of consistently thinking about what are those career clusters that are of interest to them. Our Career Pathways Guide just had its third publication this year. This was really born from the feeling that students felt lost when they were registering, that we have a lot of choices in our district, which is a fantastic thing to have for our students, but they didn't know how to put the puzzle pieces together. So too often, we'd hear from an engineering, a student who had interest in engineering and say, I had no idea we had engineering classes. Or we'd hear from a student who said they wanted to be a doctor, and they said, I had no idea we had CNA or EMR or EMT. So it's just basically a guide to help them understand what some of their choices are. Nobody's telling them that they have to take these classes, but if you're interested in a certain pathway, these might be some classes that will help you further along that pathway. Those pathways highlighted in yellow there are our pathways that are specifically being financially supported by two DLI grants that we have received, two youth service training grants, $90,000 and $100,000 for those two grants. So that affords us all sorts of opportunities, which Mike will talk a little bit more about shortly. So heading back into that coursework, we know that coursework provides great experiential learning opportunities for our students, as you can see from these three pictures. We know events also help provide students with a lot of opportunity for exposure to what they might want to do and how they want to do it. We were able to pull off a college knowledge month this year. We were in hybrid learning at the time. You can see those "I applied" signs, real simple. I just went around, and for those students that were interested in college, technical community, or four-year, it was a way to encourage them to apply early. There are all sorts of benefits to applying early, and we just wanted to kind of create a little bit of positive peer pressure for those students. You can see in the top left there, holding pendants, and in the top right, different prizes. We had a college trivia in the cafeteria, people would come up, answer questions, and get prizes. And we were able to still host visits, military, college, bottom right there, our students would gather in one space, and then the profession, or the person providing the information would join us virtually. Career Exploration Day, I'm really happy to say, happened twice this year. In the bottom right, in December, it was completely virtual at that time, so that meant that our students, our teachers, and our professionals who were joining us all did so virtually. We had great participation. You can see we had cameras on, which was fantastic, and our participation for our students was very high. In the lower left, you can hardly see that, in May, we had kind of a hybrid career exploration day where our teachers and our students were able to be together in person, and our professionals still joined virtually, with the exception of our education panel. Mr. Culver and Ms. Mudrick are in person, and then my husband joined virtually. The top two are from previous career exploration days. We even had Lifeline join us one year with the health doctor, which was really awesome. So we often hear from students that they love tours. They really can't quite visualize or understand what it might be like to work in an environment until they see it in person. So it wasn't quite the same, but in the top right, we still wanted to honor that and try to create some tour experiences virtually. So that's a tour with design-ready controls, where they got a virtual tour of the facility as well as the opportunity to hear from an electrician, an electrical engineer, an assembler, and then some of those other photos are from Schweeder's, Instruct Tomorrow event, Rosenbauer. So we know students like to get on-site. I was just talking to member Thiessen earlier about our newsletters, and I think a lot of you had recently seen our Career Launch newsletter. This is new this year, that we're trying to help foster more understanding of these opportunities for students by sending it up to families, to students, and then to our different industry partners that we have. I also write a career and college-centered newsletter that goes to both juniors and seniors. It's two different newsletters, and that too goes to families. And with that, we're on to the Career Launch classes that Mike will talk a little bit more about.
Yeah, thanks Molly. She alluded to the Department of Labor grant, and that Department of Labor grant really allowed us to do a couple of different things. One is invest in some equipment and resources that are more current with today's standards out in the industry. And so a good portion of that, of those dollars were invested right back into classrooms where students are able to utilize those tools. But it also afforded us the opportunity to create two new classes. One of them is Career Launch Explore, the other is Career Launch Experience. Those are the two courses that I am teaching. And that, if you remember back to that funnel image, is really for the students who have purposely planned where they want to go, and they're ready to branch out into some other opportunities that we may not have within the walls of our building. And so because of that, they need to have taken the technical skill courses. I'm not teaching them any technical skills in Career Launch Explore because quite frankly, their interests are diverse, and I don't have the technical skill in all of those areas. So they have to do that first. But we do complete a deeper dive into that exploration that Molly was talking about. It's easy for a student to say they want to be an electrician, but they don't necessarily know what that all means in terms of what are all the opportunities for electricians or what are the different types. Same way with a doctor, or an engineer, whatever it might be. There's so many different paths, so we try to really be more purposeful and dig deeper into that. And we do that through additional job shadowing. We try to pair them up with a mentor or a series of mentors where they can hear from somebody directly in the industry of what to expect. Molly mentioned all those professional skills. We can spend more time on that, resumes, cover letter, interviewing those pieces. And as Jim discussed, certifications, the OSHA 10 safety certification is embedded right into that course. So as we get into the internship, which is Career Launch Experience, it's possible that a 16 or 17-year-old could be placed in some type of an industrial or manufacturing type of setting. And we want to make sure that that's safe for the student and safe for the business. And so I'll talk a little bit more about how that comes together in the next slide. But on the student part, they complete that certification, and so that helps me explain to the business that they've got some knowledge and background in what it means to be safe in the workplace. I select the sites for the students. We work hard to find a good match. This isn't necessarily simply an opportunity for a business to bring somebody on to just be an extra set of hands or to be an employee. We want this to be a true learning experience for the students. We want it to be immersive, and there's a level of mentorship and teaching that has to happen in the workplace as well. But we do allow students to leave school early so that they can complete these internships. And then the supervisors at the business are giving me feedback on their performance. Students are giving me reflection on what they're doing, and then I'm going out and visiting the students in the workplace to make sure that all those dots are being connected. So this is kind of the formula that we use to summarize what we were just visiting about. We want students to get new skills, we want them to earn high school credit, a value add is they can have a wage as well. And that's really how we structured our work-based learning program. The Department of Labor grant opened up a gateway for us to utilize them to help grant some exceptions from certain child labor laws. So there are a lot of jobs that a 16 or 17-year-old wouldn't be able to do, but with their help, if they can come in and they can observe the workspace, and they can verify with an OSHA consultant that it's a safe place for a student to be, then they will, the Department of Labor and Industry Commissioner will actually sign off on that exemption and allow 16- and 17-year-olds students to work there. That's really critical to us getting students engaged in meaningful work at a job place rather than just something that they could do, it's something that we're allowing them to do. This is just a selection of the businesses who have gone through that YST approval process. We place students at businesses, especially 18-year-olds students that are not on this list, but these are some of our business partners who bought into this early on and are approved. And then the last thing that I would mention as it relates to this is the strength of our advisory boards. This partnership really allowed us to engage businesses in the conversation and give them voice on what we were doing in our classrooms and the internship experiences that we can provide. And so they're providing them with opportunities, scenarios, they gave us feedback on that equipment that we were investing in to make sure that we were being strategic with those dollars rather than just purchasing things. And so you can see there are some of the boards that we have in place. We have our Career Launch Advisory Board, which is more of an overarching structure that tells us more in general what is some of the businesses want us, what direction they want us to be going in. But then we're getting deeper now into our pathway-specific advisory boards that are really drilling into those key curricular areas that are supported by the Department of Labor grant.
Before I forget, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Mike and I actually field a lot of phone calls from other schools and districts inquiring about our career pathway work. And we honestly tell them, the reason why we've been able to go so far on this journey is because of the amazing foundation we've had with choice for our students. Our district is unparalleled with the number of elective choices that we give our students. And so oftentimes, districts want to be where we are, and they're, they've been cut to just their core coursework and they don't have those opportunities. And so they're really building from a very different place than that from which we were able to build. And I just wanted to mention that before I forgot. So this last part of the slideshow is just all about celebrating our students and celebrating the choices that they have made at this particular point. So new this year, we were able to have a senior decision day, which was really an amazing, fun event to celebrate their decision, whatever it may be. So you can see they have a banner there, they were each encouraged to sign a brick with their name and their intended path, whether that was apprenticeship, college, military, or work. That banner is now hanging in what is affectionately known as Senior Square and will remain there until next year's banner comes along. They each received two really amazing posters, special thanks to the War Boom family for helping with those. One poster went directly home to the family, and the other poster, they got to hang themselves, which was actually a very prideful moment for them. In the center there, they could write on our advice banner for ninth, seventh, and 11th graders. I'm happy to say I didn't have to cross out one piece of advice. It was all wonderful. It was great. And then we had lunch provided by Famous Dames and a couple of other activities. So I think a lot of fun was had by all. For this last part, we're going to highlight a few students because this is far more interesting and meaningful if you hear about it through the student perspective. So Emily Braumer, I started meeting with her as a sophomore. She was one of those very driven students who it was early to be thinking about her career plans, and she thought she wanted to potentially go into human resources. By fall of her junior year, she had attended a career exploration day with the healthcare administrator, and she decided that that was the path that she wanted to take, and she never really deviated, which is rare. She never really deviated from that. By September of her senior year, she had applied to a variety of schools, and by October, she was accepted to the Carlson School of Business Management at the U. We haven't had students attend Carlson for several years. I think we have five students going there this year. So really exciting, very prestigious program. And the how is in her words. So she, when we sat down this year to count up her college credits, she's like, I'd like some help with this. No problem, let's take a look. 44 college credits that she earned in our building. So every time I meet with a student who wants to do PSCEO, I challenge them on, if it's all about college credit, do you know how many you can earn in our building? So Emily is going in with a year and a half of college done, and if nothing else, it gives her a lot of freedom as she continues to explore. She took full advantage of some of those certifications that we added this year, including IC3, Microsoft Word, Excel, and PowerPoint. She earned all of those. We hear from industry repeatedly that these are very valuable credentials in the workplace. We're obviously a Google school, as many schools are, students don't have these skills, but they are still valued in the workplace. And then I already mentioned Career Exploration Days. Emily also, as a junior, went on an actuary field trip to Travelers Insurance, and that's where she learned that she didn't want to be an actuary. So this is how she feels like, excuse me, how she feels like she got such a solid understanding of where she wanted to go.
Paul was a student that I had in Career Launch courses. She was trying, she knew she wanted to do something in the trades, but wasn't sure what that was. Automotive was something she was thinking about, maybe construction. And so we spent some time digging into that further in that Career Launch 8 class. That changed through that. She went on a tour with Molly to Schweeder's Companies in Hugo, and that's where the lightbulb went off, that that's the type of environment that she saw herself in. And so that changed the courses she was taking. That, we were able to craft a plan together for her. She continued to participate in Career Exploration Days, took a number of our industrial technology courses, and now she's in the Carpenter's Union Apprenticeship Program. She's working with a company in Hugo, not the one she went on a tour for, but another company in Hugo. And they've taken her on, and so she's working during the day, during her apprenticeship classes at night, and she's continuing her training and has found the trade that she enjoys.
This is Vivian Elgier. And Vivian is kind of a unique story because we obviously don't have like immediate opportunity for aviation in our building, but she decided early on that she was interested in aviation and became part of the Civil Air Patrol at the Blaine Airport and had been participating in that since sophomore. It was through Career Exploration Days that she felt like her passion for aviation grew. Vivian is one that really took advantage of our college and military visits. Whenever I have a student who's interested in the military, I really encourage them to talk or attend a session from all of the different branches so they fully understand their options, just like you would with college. And through that, she has woven together and placed these puzzle pieces to create a very unique opportunity for herself. So Vivian is off to Oklahoma University in the fall. She was accepted into the Naval ROTC program, where she has a very significant scholarship. Simultaneously, she is going to be serving in the US Marine Corps Reserves and studying aerospace engineering. So she is going to have her education almost entirely paid for, she will be able to serve our country, and she just created such a unique opportunity for herself.
And the final student story that we'll share with you today is And the final student story that we'll share with you today is James. James is a student that we had that was, took a number of our industrial technology courses, especially in metals and manufacturing, and really had an interest in being a welder. And so he completed the Career Launch A course. And I was able to set him up with an internship at Rosenbauer in Wyoming where he was able to build fire trucks. We actually had two students there. What young person doesn't want to go build fire trucks, right? You know, it's kind of an interesting deal. But what's, what's neat about that business and what's neat about it for a student like James is that they have so many different departments there that it takes to build a fire truck from start to finish. That they were able to actually set him up, starting in their, their pumps division, where they build the, all the water pumps that go into the fire truck. And when they found out that he had this interest in welding, they were able to move him into some of those areas as well. So he was able to expand and find the right fit within their organization. He completed his nine-week internship. Rosenbauer hired him for, well, they, they hired him. I mean, they, they've employed him through the summer and into the fall. They really want to invest in him and provide him with the training and the schooling that he might need to continue to be an employee within their company. And so one of the other benefits of, of the career launch programming is I think it gives some of our local businesses access to some of our, our best students right away. And many of them, many of the ones on that list have chosen not only to invest in our students in terms of employment, but they've invested in them in future education and training that they're able to take with them as they move forward. So lots of different options for lots of different students. It's not about any one thing that's being done. I think it's about a combination of a lot of things that are being offered to them. Certainly Molly and I's goal is always to try to immerse as many students to take advantage of the opportunities that we have out there as possible. And we appreciate the support of, of this board and the district administration to allow us to do that. If you'd like to learn more, I know Molly handed out some brochures. There's a variety of links in that brochure. There's some on this last slide. And certainly you can reach out to us anytime to learn more. But with that, we can answer any questions that you might have.
Excellent presentation. I was so excited. I would love to go back to high school. My one question was the Pathway Guide. Molly, I think you mentioned that. Is that a hard copy or is it online?
Yeah, great question. So we printed up hard copies for all of our incoming ninth grade families. So they receive one with the, the hope and the direction that's a good idea to sit down at home and go through it and discuss it. And then our students in incoming 10th, 11th, and 12th, they go through the Pathway Guide during Ranger Connect, during the weeks leading up to registration. And so they're working with the Pathway Guide, but they have access to the digital version.
I just have a comment, not a question. This whole program blows me away. I think it's one of the best things we do, I mean, for me personally. And the reason I say that is, at one point in my life, I wanted to be an electrician, got no support for it. Had no idea what it did, didn't, and I said, forget that. So then I went on and went into marketing and I went into business and did that just because it sounded good and I could make some money. And then after I retired, I went into teaching and subbing in the school system. And I found the love of my whole life. And so had this program existed back then, I think my whole pathway would have been so different than how it went. You know, luckily I ended up in about the happiest place I can be for the end. But anyway, so thank you so much for this and it's just a great program. Kudos to you.
This has certainly evolved tremendously. I just unpacking all that great information, Molly, just thinking, at the beginning when you said, you know, what kind of lifestyle do you want to live? How much money do you make? How does that correspond to, you know, when you're done in four years? That is so important. One question from me is with the Zillow and the Ranger Connect, is, so that's all online? And that quarter credit that they earn is for going online and kind of working through all that and diving into that information and?
The students spend one day awaiting their Ranger Connect with their Ranger Connect teachers with M9 through 12 grades. They have a series of slides that they go through each week with them. Those activities that tie back into that. Well, it's really intended that the kids aren't doing the work just then, but they get into Zillow and they go back to it. It's almost like a Facebook for education. I don't know if you can refer back to that. They also keep their Zillow accounts correct, Molly, after they graduate. As long as they change their email, so it's not hooked to our email anymore, they can still have access to their Zillow accounts as they move on.
For life.
Pull documents that they had. You know, we ask them to do their transcripts and all that.
So we even have a 2015, where did we get that?
We started with Zillow two years ago.
Well, this is year two. We just finished year two. So we're still kind of in the implementation and ramping up part. We want it to be very much kind of just a norm for them and a tool that they use.
Molly, you have certainly grown this and I love all your energy and positivity. And I mean, everybody has, but I just want to say, do you, do you touch hands with them? And when does that occur in the Ranger Connect time?
With students in? Yeah, so I'll, I'll stop in. I'll try to make the rounds to get in. It was harder this year because so much time and the Ranger Connect was fully online for a great portion of the year. But yeah, so I'll do a lot of roaming in the cafeteria at certain times of year. But then students will make appointments with me. And I just repeatedly let them know that whenever they'd like to meet, I have, you know, those frequent flyers that will meet with me five, eight, 10 times. And then of course I'll have a lot of students that I'll never see unfortunately. But yeah, I'm happy to meet with students and parents. And I feel like more and more parents are wanting to meet with me as well, so.
I also have their deans that they can meet with. And Molly works directly with the deans, so the deans know all of this information as well. So it's definitely.
Yep.
And then Jim, you blew me away. I always tell people we have three, four AP and CIAS and.
It's growing. You know, we might lose one here, lose one there, but it grows, it seems like every year. They're not all University of Minnesota. We're spread over several different colleges. And those articulation courses are becoming more and more popular as the college system figures out how to give kids credit across their, their college system. So it's not digital, just a century or like that. We're growing those certification and college courses every year.
So that's amazing. I'm sorry, guys. One quick question, Mr. Mira. The Department of Labor grant, do we apply for that every year?
So it's, it's a two-year grant. And so Molly and Jim applied for the first one, but I got on board. So that, that created some, the mechanism for me to come on board. And then Molly and Jim mostly, with some help from me, wrote the second one. So right now, our, our first grant is expiring on June 30th. And so we will have one more grant through the next fiscal year. But I think we have an intent to apply for another grant come fall, winter, for another pathway area because it really gives us some opportunity to infuse some resources into a specific pathway to, to launch it to the next point.
And one thing that we figured out, Department of Labor does not want us going back for the same pathway or the same grant. So every time we go back, that's where we're adding, we're adding different pathways. So it's a unique grant that we're adding to because they want us to build the pathway and then be able to support it through our own means. It's really not intended as a grant that's going to fund this forever. So at some point, we're going to have all of our pathways.
And then we had such a great celebration. I can see the, you know, the governor came, team vanished. And that was all about the youth.
Correct. Yep, that was to celebrate the, the round three grant that we received, which was actually our second grant, which is, we're currently administering right now.
Thank you. Excellent work. I'm just seeing who's.
I'm ready. Do you have that? No, I just, my presentation, I just so much appreciate the work you guys are doing. Makes me proud to be a part of this organization.
Thank you. Again, great presentation, great program. I super appreciate that you break down some of the cultural barriers surrounding money and earning potential and what jobs make what money. And just actually talk dollar and cents with kids because a lot of kids get all the way through college and, and they haven't even heard about a budget because it's just something we don't talk about. But just make it normal and people can learn about it. And they can make real decisions because they have real information. And so I don't think it's ever too early to give age-appropriate information about finance. And the question though is, I know it's only been three years, but have you had any success stories of like this seriously gave the kid the boost? And they came back and said, you know, I, you know, rocketed through college or I did great in my, my career and thank you guys. I know there'll be more in the future, but are there any good ones?
I still have a small group of students that reach out to me and, and keep in touch with me. And yeah, I mean, things are going well. They're maybe not reflective to say, yeah, that career pathway. But yeah, they're, I mean, they're definitely kind of moving along their journey that they had established in, in high school.
And I would say, I don't have specifics with names to it, but I met with Lee Sina today, who's the chair of the Community Scholarship Foundation. And, you know, three years ago, if we had to find students to give a, a scholarship to in our industrial tech area leading into manufacturing, it would have been hard pressed for us to do that. This year, we had three or four scholarships that nobody had applied for. And we were able to, through the work with Molly, Mike, our deans and our teachers, identify enough kids that they could actually interview and give those scholarships to. So we have more kids that want to go in there. But it goes back to that EOS stuff too with our, kids don't see themselves going into manufacturing careers as eligible for money. They think I'm doing this and it's not the cool thing to do or whatever. And that, that story's changing. That story's changing. And there is a lot of money out there for students going into the manufacturing industry and other career in tech ed, ed fields. And it's our job to get the kids excited and see themselves in applying for that. For this year, that would be my story, but there were three phenomenal ones.
Absolutely. Graduates. But I, I just hope that it, I mean, it definitely helps them launchpad out of college. But I would be really curious in, you know, 10 years, how many of them say like, I, I really feel like that was the boost or a kid saying, I didn't think I could, but Ms. Bonnet did and, you know, coming back.
Well, my son, 2018 grad, and, and they also, that was just the start when you started, Molly, that year. And I wish you would have, wish we would have had you earlier. We only got the little tip at the end of the career fair and things like that. But four of the students my son lives with are all tour Carlson. Dylan is also U of M. And well, yeah, four of them are U of M. And they're graduating next semester early. They all had AP courses. So that's a really great success story for those four. One of the students is going longer, is going to get a double major. So he's going the full year for his fourth year. No five-year college students, so I'm happy with that for financial reasons. But just a great boost. And I, like I said, I wish it would have been a little earlier to the party there. But, but they did get such a great education. And I think just starting early in that ninth grade and really getting kids plugged in and given the opportunity to see what they like, that was something that I don't think we had the option to before. And now it's just such a great pathway for the future. So then when they get out of school, they know what they want, you know? And I was going to ask about the medical. I know you said some, is the U of, do you have like Fairview kind of working, like any shadowing for like physicians or anything in the medical world? How does that work?
Yeah, so you know, different industries, depending upon what types of opportunities there are for students are going to be different. Medical is somewhat challenging because of some of the, the training that you need to work with patients, the data privacy that's involved in working with patients. But we definitely do have a lot of connections with, say like Fairview for definitely the job shadowing, the mentoring, the career exploration days as a tour site. And especially for our, our students who are getting their Certified Nursing Assistant certification, we have opportunities for them at some of our assisted living facilities and different places like that where they can employ those students with that credential. So it might not, you know, none of this is necessarily about we're going to be able to put them where the end result is. But we can, we can, Molly and I kind of refer to it as the bypass lane. You know, we can, we can accelerate a little bit so that they can get around the traffic and that they can get a clear path for whatever their next step might be. And so these are not necessarily the endpoints, but they're a growth point for whatever the next step might be for them.
Just the shadowing piece, just to kind of see the day in a life kind of thing. Because you really like, so you don't know until you see. So it's, it's great to open kids' eyes and give them the opportunities, but thank you.
Just a quick add-on for our students that are interested in medical school. We have a great partner and district parent, Dr. Anton Rohan, who is a cardiovascular anesthesiologist at Regions. And he has been just so generous with his time. He, whenever I have a student who is interested in the med school path, he will either meet with a small group or with that individual student. And I always tell him, this is like the special sauce recipe you're getting because he tells them exactly what they need to start thinking about as an undergrad to make medical school more possible.
I would just add, this emphasis in Jim and Molly and Mike's passion for this. This is driven by and supported by the strategic plan, which is your work and the passing of our 2018 referendum that supports financially with Mike and Molly and his work and the capacity that happens. This is clearly a model program, most importantly, a program that significantly. So this is a hallmark program that drives our high school. And as you'll see tonight, at a proof, we'll play tonight, a middle school redesign that feeds right into this, engaging our middle school at 7th grade.
Thank you.
And before you go, I just want to say I really appreciate the Carpenter's Union Apprentice. Great work, great presentation. And it really is great to see all these, all this emphasis on careers in industry and tech. Because there are a lot of great middle-class opportunities in industry, tech, and trades. And often they were overlooked, so thank you all. Thank you for the presentation.
Now we will move to positive happenings. Who wants to start?
I just wanted to say I went to the, where everyone belongs, Innovation Lab with our state geographer, Susan Boyer, Boyer Bauer. And it was a really good evening. And, you know, it was just another one of those times to get together. You know, we're trying to increase our agricultural understanding where we're going as a state and figure out how we can better serve everybody in this district. And the other positive happening I want to say is that every time I drive by and see something new out there, it's just so positive to me. I guess one more thing is that the headlines in the Forsyth Times was Forsyth Schools Doing Fine Financially. And I just thought that was such a beautiful statement about the promises that we've made over the last 20 years that if, if the public passed these levies and they pass that bond to get this reconstruction done, that we'd be in a better place as a school district. And we are, right? Is that we are in such a better place now. And a headline like that would never have happened 15 years ago. It would have been something that we're scrambling, we're laying off, we're doing all this stuff instead. The public trusted us. They gave us their money. And we made a bunch of promises and we kept those promises. And I really liked that headline.
Number two?
I just wanted to mention graduation and a big shout out, a great job for Jim Caldwell, Principal Caldwell. I thought the graduation was wonderful except for the heat, obviously. A little warm, but I thought it was great. And it was wonderful to see all the students there. And I congratulate the class of 2021 for being there after everything they had to go through to get theirs. So that was a great opportunity and we all got to attend in person, which was a great deal. I attended the Northeast Metro Golf Tournament on a couple Tuesdays ago. They had 100 participants in the tournament, so raised some money for their foundation. And last of all, I just want to play off what Rob said, and that's the track. I drive by here a lot because I live over in this neighborhood. I drive by the field and I see the football field going in and the track going in. I had two kids who played soccer on that field. And I mean, they would kill to come back and be able to play on a new field like we're going to have. So it's a great thing.
Oh, okay. I was just going to do graduation too. That was just an awesome night. I was telling Renee that I probably saw them at a school we had never, just seeing them come across on stage and the look in their eye and just to hear all their names. It's like, wow, it was wonderful. I love the speeches too. I thought they were all very different, but very well-written and also. I wanted to mention that Career Launch Newsletter tonight, that was about to happen for me. And I've never seen that. I watched it several times, showed it to my husband. Wow, it's amazing what we do at Forsyth. Wow, it's amazing what we do at Forsyth High School with getting students ready for their futures. It's just such a proud to happening. Also, I wanted to mention the Equity Innovation Lab. It's a really caring and resourceful center. Just really dialed in on certain areas and hoping that super talented people are there. And then I just want to give a shout-out, the pop-up libraries are being sponsored this summer. And Sound Field Park had theirs last night, or yesterday during the day. So the neighbors are all now there and came to X thing. There was just a lot of fun and joy there. And that's where it all pretty.
Who else?
Jeff was there also, he volunteered at the Senior Night All-Life Party. Very fun, very well-attended. Prizes and donations were amazing. We could go, wouldn't somebody get to ground like you kayak? It was awesome, so well done.
Yeah, I would like to echo that. TVs, fridges, I mean, like mini fridges for dorm rooms, right? They had some great prizes, and it's always so much fun to see those kids having such a great time after graduation. The energy they have coming across the stage just continues all night long. I don't know how I stay up till 5:30 in the morning. Saturday is always rough, but it's great fun. Anyone else? We'll move on. We've got reports, any workshops or conferences in the summer? Member Tyson, do you have a City of Forsyth report?
I just had a little, they resumed to holiday person meetings. They left the option to attend the forum ennobly. That was interesting. Very exciting, the Forest Lake Parade is on. So we have all these things we can do in person again. And then I wanted to mention, too, Arts in the Park collaboration. Our community ad is really looking fun. And we registered the community ad, and of course, it's around $5. So I did see people down in the park, I think it was some kids create, but it was like a lot of fun. And that concludes my report.
Member Tyson, Superintendent Report, Dr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Earlier this week, a parent shared with me a post from the Scandia Neighborhood Act showing a graphic image of hate speech using the N-word and a swastika painted on a vehicle in the Scandia community. This despicable act is condemned as the strongest one, and the community must stand together in condemning this and all acts of hate in our community. As a district, we have implemented programs to address and stamp any hate speech or racial targeting within our schools and amongst our students. We have come a long way in this work, but we know there's still much work to do. In addition, we have joined with YMCA and our local communities on a collaborative effort called Everyone Belongs that seeks to end bias and prejudice within our community and create a more welcoming culture for all. You can find information about this project at the Everyone Belongs website, specifically everyonebelongsfl.org. This project has already sponsored several free community learning sessions and conversations on inclusive bias, inclusion and equity, and our communities' changing demographics. And we are actively looking for more ways to continue to engage our community in this work. As mentioned earlier, the Athletic Field Project is moving along in a very exciting way. We remain on schedule and on budget with this project. And by the start of the fall season, we'll be hosting events on the new field with bleachers facing away from the setting sun and with a new concession stand with indoor restroom facilities. By the spring, we will be hosting the first track meet in over 25 years. Please let me emphasize that this project will not raise property taxes in the community as we're able to utilize additional funding sources and take advantage of an expanding tax base. On June 15th, as member Rayfield and member Tyson indicated, the Everyone Belongs Project hosted a presentation by stage mapper Susan Bower on the demographic trends in the Forsyth area. This presentation was titled, "Our Community Yesterday, Today, and Tomorrow." We had over 40 participants in the virtual presentation. The presentation will be a recording that will be posted on the Everyone Belongs website along with the slides that she presented. The biggest takeaway from the session was our community, to nobody's surprise, is aging. It's happening across Minnesota and across the country. And I believe it was 2324, 2023, 2024, the aging population entering retirement will exceed school-aged children. So when we get the information from Hazel Reinhardt on our demographic study two years ago, and the school-aged children population entering kindergarten was going down, this was further supported by his presentation. So it's important for us to understand our demographic is going down. All the more need to be competitive with our neighbors, charter schools. Organizations like we saw tonight are precisely the kind of work that will keep our kids in drought and kids from labor districts. Summer school is off to a fantastic start. Students started on Monday and will continue through July 40th. We have 502 students in Raleigh, who get grades K through K-6, 70 students in grades 7 and 8, and 320 students in grades 9 through 12. A total of over 1,000 students in summer school. The opportunity this summer for summer school was to invite any student who might have experienced this, any student identified by a teacher's alderman for summer school. Hence the larger numbers. State is supporting that with additional resources for summer school. The district is hosting a vaccination clinic for our students and community members 12 years of age older on July 16th with a second dose August 6th at the high school. Information was provided to families earlier today. And in addition, Washington Community is hosting vaccination clinics in Forsyth. And the community can visit our website for more information and details. The school board's self-evaluation in-service is scheduled for next month on Thursday, July 15th. This is our mid-month meeting, and we are scheduled to start at 5:00 p.m. and end at around 8:00 p.m. I will have information from Gil Hillman from the NSD prior to the meeting for your review and preparation for this in-service. Lastly, this is Diane Jorgis' last school board meeting as graduate teaching. I'm sure she'll still come. And just for entertainment, board members, she and Carolyn Lutinding will be retiring at the end of the month. Both of these leaders have left an indelible mark on our district, and we are far better for their service to students, families, and staff. And I wish them an incredible retirement as they have learned this next chapter in their life. With that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Massey. With that, we will move to approving the consent agenda. Does anybody have a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of approving a consent agenda, signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Move on to action items. A1, FLAS Staff Retirement Notice. Dr. Massey. We have a motion to approve? Motion and a second. Any discussion? Tyson?
We are on A1, right?
Yes.
Great, Kate. Well, we see Catherine Massey on there, 19 years. Wow. And that's wonderful, she gave a show of retirement, right in time for all the weddings. Congrats to her. And I also want to mention Robin Duvall. Ms. Robin worked 36 years in her early childhood program. And I have the report of working in Ms. Robin and Ms. Kathy's classroom. And, you know, you couldn't find anybody. She's just a quintessential early childhood teacher that's nurturing, understanding of all those developmental milestones. And she's just an exceptional early childhood teacher. So she'll be good in years. I'm hoping we can find someone like Robin, Dennis Kathy, that way. That's all I want to say.
I can't tell Kate that she's closing her speech.
I mean, we could remove it from the agenda.
Can we forget the next one? Maybe I should try just go back one and mention Mr. Miller, who's leaving us. He was a phenomenal educator and educator also, so I'm sorry to see him. So I had the pleasure of working with him some this past year. And he was always there, there as if I mentally called him. Just turned up when he did, so.
No, I was just going to say also, giving Kate, you know, wonderful retirement. Forsyth Elementary was my home base. She was there many, many years, so I got to see her a lot. She's just a wonderful lady, and I just wish her a lot of pickleball fun. She likes her pickleball, and enjoy her pool and her wedding. She's well-earned her retirement.
Any further discussion? I would like to say we have lost a lot of combined talent this year to retirement. You start looking at the years added up, it's just a ton of talent. And I look forward to all the new ideas that new folks are going to bring in, which is also going to be exciting. So with that, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving A1, signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Move to A2, donations. Member Kettle?
This month, the district had a total of $3,715 of donations. We had donations ranging all the way from $100 to $1,500. We would like to thank the Hugo American Legion Post 620 for two different donations. Forest Lake FFA alumni for a donation. Melissa Schlemmer for an $800 donation. The CAF of America for their donation. Target Corporation. Martin Pevsner Engineering PA, who donated $1,500 for Forest Lake Area Schools Staff Back-to-School Programs. Anderson Kraus Construction Company, which also donated $500 to the same program, Forest Lake Area Schools Staff Back-to-School Program, and $25 to Signature Orthodontics to Scandia Elementary. So on behalf of the district, we would like to thank those organizations. And I would like to make a motion that we approve the contributions and permit their uses designated by the donors. Again, thank you from the district.
Second. Any further discussion? There is nothing further. All those in favor of accepting donations, signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Move to A3, the Middle School Course of Study Redesign.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll have JP Jacobsen here from Nashville to. But this will be a follow-up presentation on the middle school redesign, taking us right to the heart of the actual changes after an elaborate process that brought a great deal of creativity and input extra census around this big shift. And as you saw earlier tonight, aligned with the good work happening at the high school. And tonight, we'll be asking for your approval of this plan. JP, take it away.
JP, we can't hear you.
Not muted on here, is it on there? Should come to the speakers.
JP, give it a try. One more time.
All right, coming through.
Perfect.
Perfect. Well, perfect, and thank you for letting me join you from Nashville. I don't have any music to share, but I do have some deciding news to share regarding the work happening at the middle school. So I want to thank Superintendent Massey for that introduction. Chair Peterson and members of the board. This is a joy to join you and talk about the continued work happening at our academic level at the middle school. I think it's inarguable that the, one of the hallmarks of any thriving district is one that has a strategic plan that is alive, that is being followed on a daily basis and driving the work of the leaders of the school district. And just as Jim Caldwell mentioned earlier, this strategic plan in Focus Area 3 is driving a lot of the work that you heard us talk about in regards to the middle school design. And two particular areas around creating a gateway experiences that couple with our high school program already in place, that being the career pathway wheel, and having kids really taste everything on the career pathway wheel while in the seventh and eighth grade, allowing them to make informed, experienced choices when heading into ninth grade. And then two, while in middle school, get a sense of what are some of the career options out there today and possibly tomorrow, so that when students are learning and doing their school today, they see relevance in it for when they prepare for careers in life outside of school, after school. A couple of just highlights that I'm going to go over. One of the things that we knew is we wanted to create a school where students were no longer primarily recipients of information and ideas, but they were gaining those, that knowledge through learning experiences. We believe strongly that all people learn best through experience. And when students move through the model that you're going to see again in a second year, that they will be learning through experiences that touch on each of these different bullets. That's how we want to design not just our coursework, but the way that the transfer of information and ideas happens on a daily basis when we have seventh and eighth graders coming through our system. And this will drive a lot of the coursework that we're going to be doing here when we, if approved by the board meeting by the board tonight. Here is our two-year academic course of study. As you can see, it still has a full year experience in what we call our core content areas, math, science, social studies, and English and language arts. But there you'll also see in the seventh and eighth grade where our career experiences thrive and live. That is the buckets of courses from our areas of interest within our career pathway wheel that, again, Jim talked about, Molly talked about, and Mike talked about earlier. Now students are experiencing them all in the middle of middle level. And then you'll see in the seventh and eighth grade how we are able to include and meet some new requirements in the arts where students need to, are required to take two, and we have to offer at least three areas in the arts when in the seventh and eighth grade. And so that's how we, you'll see how we're doing that there. As well as the committee work really felt passionate that our jobs as educators and as educational system is to not only prepare students for careers and gain full employment after graduation, but also to teach them the skills and ideas necessary to live healthy lives outside of school. And so you'll see there in the seventh grade what we call a healthy living beyond the careers course. All of this will have elective options in the eighth grade year as well. And we see those as either second-level electives in the career pathways taken in seventh grade or parallel elective options that kids just know that they are interested in when they look through our registration guide. Here are some of the high-level course renderings that we talked about before, how we describe what those career pathways and experiences might look like in the seventh and eighth grade. And if approved tonight, the task teaching and learning will be to sit down with a committee of people to begin to add greater detail to what these courses, the actual activities that students will do as they go through any one of the career pathway experiences. And these tangential coursework that we have, around 20% for skills and healthy living and beyond careers. So we, I think you, some of you have heard me present two or three times on this already through committee work in our June 3rd board meeting. I think everybody's seen it at least once. It is exciting work, quite honestly. And I, I think, you know, I heard a member, Corcoran, say earlier that she wishes some of this was in place at the high school level when her son graduated just a few years ago. What I would hope to say, have everybody thinking is, our feeling is that they wish their own children had been able to go through the middle school level program once this program is fully functional up and off the ground. We think it's the right thing for our district. We think it's the right thing for our community. And it really creates great synergy and flow from our seventh and eighth grade middle school feeding into what is already a really high-quality program at the high school. So with that, I'm open to ask, to answering any questions related to the model or the process up until this point or going forward.
Questions? Member Luther.
Thank you. And I have listened to this presentation a couple of times, and I really like it. I like the direction you're going. And my first instinct, the first time I heard it, was you're taking away a lot of choices in the beginning. But then upon reflection, I agree that having them taste everything really counts. And it's more like, we don't need to pick a career in 7th grade. And that's almost how it felt like when you had to focus so early on something. And they don't have the information in 7th grade to pick. So now they'll, they have to take their tech, and they have to take their art, and they have to take their computer. And they'll be better informed by 8th grade and definitely 9th grade to know. I really liked that, and I didn't like that so much, so they, they at least tried them all. My one real question is, moving forward, you said there's a group that's working on this. Does it include students and parents?
You know, it might be. And we might also be partnering with local industry state, business owners to add to a group like that. So parents and students have been involved in the process through when we opened the middle school. We created the original scope and idea for this and during our strategic plan. And we, we met with students during the process itself as to putting together what this overall idea was. We had a feedback group of students from the high school who said a lot of what we just said earlier. They wish they had gone through a program like this. But yeah, we're gonna be bringing input in from those groups as well. And what I'd like to also say, Member Luther, is that we might be test-driving some of this curriculum even yet this year and getting fake feedback from, in this fall, and feedback from students as they go through it during the day in their 7th and 8th grade year. So yeah, we will certainly find ways to embed feedback from, from parents and students as well.
Okay, two and three, right.
And to your other point, Member Luther, I'm so glad that you mentioned that, that question around choice. What, what we're also gonna do as part of this is students are gonna see greater choice within each of those career pathway courses. So the projects, the things that they research, the things that they present on, who they work with in groups. Though that is where they're gonna, they're gonna really benefit from showing through their own passions and interests how they are going to do and meet a lot of the standards as it relates to these courses. The courses themselves are gonna have a lot of choice pathways built in.
Well, I just have one question, JP. Can you refresh my memory? When does this roll out?
Yeah, thank you for asking. So we are going for full implementation for the fall of 2022, so not this fall. The plan is for through July and August and into the beginning of the school year is to start to create the courses for this year, test-drive some of the curriculum, as I just mentioned, even this year. But this, that career pathway experience, that course of study will go into, will start the fall of 2022.
Thank you. And I just wanna add, your team did a phenomenal job. This redesign has got just so many wonderful features, like you already said. You know, the lines with our strategic plan, with them creating that gateway in the high school, just all that collaboration there. And I just feel like every middle schooler from 100 miles around should be going to Forest Lake Area Middle School. This is really, really good work, so thank you for that.
And what I would add to that is I think that what also will really be exciting to parents and to students in the 5th and 6th grade is when they begin to cast their gaze on what will 7th and 8th grade look like for them. We have a clear course of study, a clear sequence of learning experiences that people will say, oh, that is what I get to do when I'm in, when I'm in middle school. And now I see how that really connects and serves as that bridge to high school. When we talk about the middle school being those formative years where people figure out what they like and what they're interested in. Maybe sometimes for the very first time. We think as a, as a design team, this revised course of study really is gonna help us do a better job of that with ours, with our middle school kids going forward.
Thanks. And I think we've all spoke about, you know, my daughters, it was not that, that experience you have now in this new redesign. So I think this is just a really positive, positive move.
I think that's all the questions. Or did you have them?
No, I was just gonna say it's great. And what I like is just that kids will have that choice and they will get to see what they like. So I don't, you don't know until you know. That's my new saying, 'cause you don't know. So giving them that opportunity is, you know, maybe kids would, 'cause even my children too going through didn't, they didn't really know what they liked until they was almost graduating from a high school. So it just gives them those few extra years to really develop their, who they are. So I thank you for all the hard work and that futuristic thinking is what I think it is. So thank you.
Thank you, JP. With that, do we have a motion on A3?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I would just recommend to JP, after the kids go to sleep, to head down to the Rockers Western World.
Let's go get some coffee, boys.
Hearing no further discussion. Member Clerk, would you please say your roll call?
Member Kettle.
Aye.
Member Kettle votes aye. Member Olson.
Aye.
Member Rayfield.
Aye.
Member Tyson.
Aye.
Member Peterson.
Aye.
Member Luther votes aye. Member Corcoran.
Aye.
Motion passes, move to A4. Thank you, JP. Appreciate your time. Have fun in Nashville. And we will move to A4, immunization requirements. Dr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chad, we're asking for your approval of the recommended updates for Policy 525. The only update we'll see here is an update to the MDEH form related to the required vaccinations for our students. With that, the administration recommends...
We have a motion on A4?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion? I would just like to mention that this does not involve coronavirus in any way, shape, or form. And this is just a standard update to a policy. Just for those watching. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Member Clerk, would you please say your roll call?
Member Olson.
Aye.
Member Rayfield.
Aye.
Member Tyson.
Aye.
Member Peterson.
Aye.
Member Luther votes aye. Member Corcoran.
Aye.
Member Kettle.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. A5, participation of private school students in District 831 programs, Policy 527. Dr. Massey.
The policy committee has spent time reviewing this policy and updating, looking for necessary appropriate updates. At this time, the policy committee is recommending no changes to the policy, and with that, administration recommends...
We have a motion to approve A5.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none. Member Clerk, would you please say your roll call?
Member Rayfield.
Aye.
Member Tyson.
Aye.
Member Peterson.
Aye.
Member Luther votes aye. Member Corcoran.
Aye.
Member Kettle.
Aye.
Member Olson.
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move to A6, resolution approving long-term facilities maintenance revenue plan for intermediate District 916. Director Martine.
Thank you, Board Chair. And members of the school board, this is the second time we've seen this. It's $9,668 out of a whole spend of $142,000 across all the intermediate district subscribers. Just ask that you approve the resolution for our share of their LTFM money.
We have a motion to approve...
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I just have a question. Do all the member districts, obviously they're all board on, and do they all have to approve it to make this go?
They do, and I've never seen a year where that has failed. They're not substantial amounts. We'll be talking in the next item about millions.
Yeah, yeah, difference.
And T for Tyson?
There you have a great question. How long have the intermediate 7 LTFM?
That's a great question. I don't know, but it's been more than five years.
It doesn't fall that long, five years, I think.
At least five years.
Yeah. I know, yeah.
Any further discussion?
Question, how is the percent figured? Is it by students enrolled?
Yeah, the attachment A is, I think, based off of ADM.
Seeing no further discussion. Member Clerk, please say your roll call.
Tyson.
Aye.
Member Peterson.
Aye.
Member Luther votes aye. Member Corcoran.
Aye.
Member Kettle.
Aye.
Member Olson.
Aye.
And member Rayfield.
Aye.
Motion passes. Move to A7, resolution approving alternative facilities maintenance revenue plan for Forest Lake Area Schools.
So we have as attachments in Board Book, a statement of assurances. That's been required for quite some time. That was just executed by Dr. Massey today. The long-term facilities maintenance revenue or alternative facilities revenue spreadsheet has about 15 columns of numbers, 60 rows. If you wanna dig into that detail, it's there. We won't be submitting to MDE for quite some time. It's due July 31st. On the revenue side, it's got a few, or on the expenditure side, it's got a few less rows, but we're talking 15 columns of numbers. So as far as what the plan holds, it's got FY23 as the first year. And that's the 2223 school year. We're gonna be talking about that in our tax process this fall, ultimately approving that in December. And then it will be for the 2223 school year. Now, we're at 1B district now, or a 1A district instead of only long-term facility maintenance revenue. So we're gonna be budgeting about 3.4 million in FY24, 3.9 million. FY25, 4.1 million. The plan right now is then to increase that to about 5.1 million. But we'll have opportunity each year to revise that. So with that type of increase, we don't think taxes, property taxes for our residents will be impacted any differently than they were the year before. That's pretty exciting. But I've put up here the projects that we're looking at that comprise the bulk of that. Now, keep in mind for FY22, not currently under consideration, but the 2122 school year beginning July 1st, we're gonna be finishing out the project at the high school. We're gonna be finishing out the Central Learning Center. We've got some asphalt work to be done. We've already bid for the education center roofing. Those are gonna comprise the FY22 project. The bulk of the money for FY23 would be item number one. And so for time beyond that, we can begin looking at de-communicification in the varsity gym area. I'm aware that that's a hot topic, and we knew that was even before tonight. So we're meeting with our engineer next week. And Chad Martin, you've met him before, from Martin Pevsner Engineering. We're gonna discuss some potential solutions. We're gonna discuss the possibility of some of those federal funds to possibly address it. So unfortunately, I don't have any answers to you or for you this evening, but I wanted you to know that Dr. Massey and I were responsive to issues you've brought up and attempting to be preemptive. We'd ask that you approve our long-term facilities maintenance submission. It is those attachments A1, 2, and 3. It's the budget for revenue, the budget for expenditures, and the detail is in Board Book. I can stand for questions.
I have a question, Larry. I mean, if something came up that wasn't in this order of funding or what you're gonna fix, can it be changed? Can things be adjusted as time goes on?
Absolutely. You could, if you desired, to move anything around at any point in time. We have always stated when we approve a budget, when we approve a plan, that it can be amended. And it frequently is. One thing I didn't mention, we're gonna be talking to some folks about how to apply some coatings to Forest View's exterior. I know we talked about that at the June meeting, and this was a new business item. So that also is going, it's underway for analysis. I don't have any pricing, but we're exploring that.
Thank you. I just wanna make sure.
So if this changes, then what's in it?
This hasn't changed from what you've seen, and I don't plan on changing it. What I plan to do is come back with a temporary plan for how we can dump coal air into your varsity gym and see if federal dollars qualify during either FY22 or FY23 to do that project. Otherwise, it wouldn't be scheduled for FY24 at this point.
Then what about the Forest View fixing up that exterior?
That would be a minimal expense under a hundred grand, and we just fit within these millions.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And then Larry, another question that you love. How long have we had all facilities? 'Cause we, you know, we took forever to get that. And we just kept going, oh! Remember that?
This is the first time we're making a 1A submission. We heard last year during tax season that it came in cold. We didn't get a certificate. There wasn't a ta-da moment, but I created one with the email for you folks. I think last December, when I said, Mr. Mo from MDE has characterized us as a 1A district. That's called it. We're finally qualifying. I think it was a 12-year run over multiple superintendents to get that accomplished.
Yeah, I just spent like 12, 13 years there, using my year and so...
And that's why we're keeping a portion of the Central Learning Center. If that were fully demolished, we would not qualify.
And how we add to better than this plan is our commitment to keep up and maintain the investment we invested with the 2015 Humber. We recall during the campaign, the insurmounting, that accusation. We had all these buildings that we didn't invest in, keeping them up to speed. Now we got $150,000 of cost. Well, with this plan, we can keep age-back mechanical systems, roof structures up to speed so that we're not faced with a significant bracket a year's done.
Right, and that's something we've tried to dig out of for many, many, many years. And now we're out of it. And now we have all facilities, so...
Yeah, assuming the legislature doesn't change anything. Because they have often changed things and not to the best.
Any other questions? What's your pleasure with A7?
Will be approved. Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none. Member Clerk, would you please say your roll call?
Member Peterson.
Aye.
Member Luther votes aye. Member Corcoran.
Aye.
Member Kettle.
Aye.
Member Olson.
Aye.
Member Rayfield.
Aye.
And member Tyson.
Aye.
We'll move on to...
Thank you.
A8, the monthly building sub-plan termination. Dr. Massey.
Thank you. In order to get ourselves through this very challenging year where substitutes were barely scarce and hardly available, we implemented this plan to place a somewhat of a longer-term substitute each of our elementarys to be available on an ongoing basis to fill a subsidy being more invaluable this year. I extended debt of gratitude to each of them for their work. But as we sit here tonight in closer proximity without Massey, this is an indication that we're moving into a far better window. And this year, next year, it'll be very different. With that in mind, we're looking to end that substitute plan of long-term, anchor-term, or permanent subs in our elementarys. And with that, administration will ask for true...
What's your pleasure with A8?
Will be approved at nothing.
Right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on A8. Any discussion?
I just have a question, actually. So did it work as planned? Did they fill in every, did they actually work every day? Or were there days where they were just there?
It worked, especially in the early, in the beginning. We phased them in, but when they were into early winter, late fall, they were needing... And we moved some from one building to another. So some buildings needed two. And if one building was small, they were pretty small. Yes, they were working there.
And is there any, I know we're women barred when spending it, but looking towards the future, is it worth having an extra teacher for consistency, to know the kids, to really be in that... is it worth having an extra teacher for consistency to know the kids, to really be in that building, sort of an extra hand that the kids know in this capacity?
There is some benefit to that, but we do have regular subs that, to a degree, provide that for schools. It's a cross-benefit analysis. These are substantially higher costs to the district. If we can accomplish our goal, we don't need more short-term subs or on-call subs, it might be.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Member clerk, please take your roll call.
Member Luther votes aye. Member Corcoran.
Aye.
Member Kettle.
Aye.
Member Olson.
Aye.
Member Rayfield.
Aye.
Member Tyson.
Aye.
And member Peterson.
Aye. Motion passes. We'll move to eight-nine. Student participation in school board business. Dr. Tyson.
All right. I have provided for your request on the last board meetings, additional consideration for student representation at the board level. I think, well, first of all, I report you to the table provided which shows surrounding nearby districts and their experience with the student representative at the board table. So, you can see highlighted in blue districts that currently or recently have had a student rep formally seated at the, at the school board table. So, that's a reference for you to see how that plays out in nearby districts. Next document provides essentially two actions for consideration. One would be to expand student engagement in school board work. And that would be through this concept, through school, expanding student involvement at the school board committee level. Currently, we have student reps on the policy committee. We do not have reps on our other committees. This proposal would bring one to two students into those committees and serve in the capacity of pretty deep engagement, because there would be a regular member of that committee participating fully in conversation and discussion. In addition to that, I've writing a framework for a student report to the board as well. I identified leadership committees, student council, NHS, FFA, peer leaders, as formal leadership committees. Not that other students couldn't be identified. We're drawing from leadership committees at the secondary level. And even student councils at the elementary, if we choose to do that, could be a regular report to the board. And they would provide a report, their experience specific to their high school, middle school. So, it's a framework, and if that's the direction the board prefers at all, I can work out more detail what that, what that might be. The second action to consider would be an actual student school board representative at the school board table. And I've provided some information about the selection and appointment process. I even, I'm not so sure I stated here, but we currently do not have a policy as such. I think we would want to do that. If we go down this road, the policy committee starts in September, September, October. Early as we can start, that will be Halloween, that approval, November, December, or gets deferred for the next Thursday, right, in September. There are options there. There's different ways we can identify, nominate, appoint students for that role and the selection process. So, I don't want to lock that in with, here's the specific way this has to be done. There are ways to do that, but give some consideration in. I envision the term, if we move, if the board chooses to go this way, to be a one-year term. Where the student could reapply or renominate, hammer herself for continuation. And then directly from the MSBA guidance, I've pulled some relevant components that they provide by way of consideration. So, I present this to the board, Mr. Chair, for the board to consider and discuss both of those actions and drive further direction for next year.
At this time, I guess, we'll open up for discussion. Member Kettle.
After today, after the presentation that the high school made about career launch, and knowing that with graduation, we had almost five hundred students graduate as seniors, I want to see us support the second proposal to have somebody actually on, on this board. I know we talked about this a lot at the last meeting, and I know there's some history that I'm not involved in with how this may have happened in the past. But this can be a career launch. I can't believe that out of almost five hundred students, there wouldn't be one student that would take this as an opportunity to launch a career in either government or some other career in politics or otherwise. So, I really want to see us go this way, I think. You know, I think this is the fairest way. And there are organizations, as I understand at MSBA, that there's something like a hundred school districts that do this. I don't know that, I haven't heard of problems. And as I said, I attended a session on it. I didn't hear any problems from the people attending the session that this presented any big problems for the council, so.
Thank you. And we did discuss it at the last meeting. I actually don't see these two things as mutually exclusive. Like, it's not, like, we can't just have one and not the other. There could be kids on every single community, committee, as far as I know, in the past, current, future. So, there's nothing to say that a heavy fourth grader or a twelfth grader, and in doing the levy, there were eleven to twelfth graders that were at every single community meeting and spoke every single time. And so, there are kids that maybe they just don't know about it. So, I'd love to see some outreach on the committee membership. And the student report to the school board, I think, would be a fantastic idea to hear in their own words. And that rotating through schools and groups would be fantastic. I'd love to hear from them. But both those things are different than a seat at the table. It's just like there are lots of committee members that enjoy their roles on committees, but it is different being a school board member. And I truly support this for the same reasons that member Kettle said. This is a launchpad. Even if they find out that they hate sitting at the table, that's really valuable information to find out at seventeen or eighteen and not after they've been elected, because they think this was a great idea, and they run, and then they're stuck for two or four years in a position and can't serve the community. So, make your mistakes young. It's fine. I really think that we should at least offer the opportunity. And that's where I only see gain in adding this option for our students. And looking at who does it and who doesn't, I mean, I'd like to be with the people who do and add our names to that list. Those are some respected school districts that I know a lot of our, some of our people look at and choose them. And don't go here, and go there.
Well, I, I think that I'd like to have more student involvement, of course. I know how busy high school students are with school and extra activities. I know my kids were always busy. It depends on the interest. I mean, you could pick each thing. But I think I'd love to get them on committees first. I mean, let them see what, even to show up once a month to do that on a committee. If they have to miss them, you know, then it's not like missing a meeting. It's a different kind of thing. So, I kind of, I like, like, the Mountview one. I mean, we can sit and pick apart everything, but I guess it'd just be the interest. We'd have to see if someone's really interested. I hate to, like, do all this planning and then not even have a student interested. You just don't know, I guess. That, that's, I mean, Molly, I mean, Jim and Molly, and they, you guys know the students, and you would kind of know. But I think just getting kids on committees, just to learn what the school district's all about. I mean, you could get someone from accounting or finance on the finance committee. You could have someone from communications, definitely in the communication world, buildings and grounds, someone that's looking at construction management or anything in that trades area. What a great opportunity that would be. I mean, you have just a lot of opportunity, but to get kids to commit, that's really going to be the key. Get the right people. So, that's where I'd like to start. It doesn't mean I'd, like, wouldn't grow into be more, but just starting to get people on committees is what I'd like to do. That's what I think.
Any other discussion? Member Olson.
I agree with Julie, but I would also not be opposed to us getting a policy in place and then see what the, maybe next year, maybe the next year, if we have something in place, we bring it back each year, and go, look, we're going to find people who are interested now. So, let's move forward with something so that we can make this happen down the road.
Any other discussion?
Well, for me, I, you know, looking in this, at this information and kind of dialing into it, there's nine districts, and six don't have anything, and three do. And I guess, from my perspective, I'm not looking at it as, wow, this could be a problem, let's not do it, because I do see it as a bigger opportunity. So, I am a little conflicted, but I do feel that we have to gauge interest, and we can't kind of put the cart before the horse. And also for me, I kind of have it in two baskets. I see one opportunity with the expanded student engagement to hear from a lot of voices in a lot of groups and have them be on committees, like member Corcoran said, actually looking at blueprints and looking at construction projects. I mean, doing that interaction and that actual, kind of getting comfortable with staff, getting to know who's in a meeting with district leaders. Just kind of plunking somebody right into the, to the other opportunity, I think, would be an arduous learning experience and orientation. And then there is no mention of mentoring after that. So, I really would like to see them set up for success and not just doing it because, you know, it's a scholarship and you think it's a great idea. I'd like to build up what's on, who could be on committees and get comfortable with how many we're getting and focus on improving that. So, I just see that it's, I can't make that leap yet, but like member Olson said, you know, maybe down the road, let's see how it works out, what it makes you bring back.
No, I mean, for me, I, you know, I've kind of mixed ages with what different schools are doing. And, you know, quite honestly, you know, I, I don't think that having a student representative on the board to me is the best use of, best way to get the students engaged in school board activity and decision-making, right? But on the other hand, too, it's always fun to try something new and see how it works, you know? I mean, and kind of shake it up a little bit. I personally do believe though, that I think it's, you know, I think it's critical that we hear what the students are seeing, going through. And I think that, you know, having a standard report that a student representative would give, you know, to me, that seems like the best way to get the students engaged. I mean, quite honestly, any student could come and speak on any board item right now, right, and before a meeting. But it's a matter, but it's kind of a formal thing where we're inviting the students to come and tell us what you think. I think would kind of formalize it and get them thinking, hey, this is, this is the thing we're thinking about, and we want to come before the board and talk about it, right? And so, they could be much more preformed. If they were actually on, on the board itself, tonight, they would have been limited to speaking just about the application to the Department of Education for the bond. They'd have to be just answering on our regular agenda stuff, right? Which, you know, that's, I mean, like, the, maybe they have an opinion on the school course of study, but donations, immunization, participation in private school, resolution of long-term facilities, resolution approving alternate facilities, these are critical issues to us, right? Because, you know, a lot, all the history and stuff that's gone into it, but for a student, I think they'd rather come forward and say, you know, the bullying thing's not working right at the high school, or this isn't working right. So, so that's kind of my, like I say, I'm not, I'm not, you know, if we had a student representative, I'm sure it'd be fine. I mean, it would be fine. But to me, I just, I think a way to engage students in, in the best benefit would come from them picking the subject that they wanted to talk to us.
Any other discussion?
Sort of circling around. So, how many of us had, have had a virtual stranger come up to us and ask something, because they know we're on this board? And there are peers. There are people at Pickable, or there are people at Mom's Club, or there are people in the library, or the Y. They recognize us, and they feel comfortable because we're their peer, and we represent a pretty good cross-section of our community, except we do not represent student community. Having a student walk up to an adult saying, hey, I really don't feel comfortable about what's going on at this, whatever, that takes, that's a really high barrier of entry, to walk up to an adult and say something. And maybe it gets to a teacher, who gets to an administrator, who gets to us. So, that's, that's four levels. But if there was a student representation, some person, and their picture's up or is just known, then other kids, because that is their peer, would go to them and say, hey, school board rep kid person, try to be gender neutral. I could, what's going on with the track or bullying, or like, what do we spend our money on, or what, what's the deal? And that person will start bringing in, and they might say, I have no idea, but I know who to ask. And they do, because they'll be, they'll have their couple days of boot camp of who does what, which I didn't know a single thing of before I had my boot camp of who does what. And they'll have their day of who does what, and they'll have that network, and they'll be able to say, like, oh, yeah, hold on. That's, that's not something we even do. That's like a state thing, but I bet this person could tell you more about it. Or, or maybe this other thing is what you're really interested in. And so, they would have a peer. They would have somebody at their level, at their school, who would have interaction and interface and, and the courage and opportunity to speak to us, because we'll talk to them, and they'll find out we're not scary monster people. But to a high school student, we are very unapproachable. To administration and some teachers, we're unapproachable. So, expecting a kid to step out of their comfort zone like five degrees to talk to us on a subject is a big barrier to entry. And sure, there's like five hundred or so kids that would be eligible to this, like you said, Alex, like, at least one or two should be interested. And to Jill's point, maybe the first year, we don't get anybody, but it's an opportunity, just like a scholarship that's not taken. It doesn't go away. You don't force someone to do it, but it's there. And every time someone, it's, it's one more thing that Molly, like, you could say, hey, you know, there's a board position. You should apply for that in September. And it's one more thing in your toolbox to offer to the kids that would be a valid asset. And that's, that's just talk from their side. From our side, there's things we don't know, we don't know. There's things that come up as surprises to us, that if you ask any high school students, they'll say, oh, yeah, it's been going for ages. And we've been caught short in a couple situations where had we had someone who felt the responsibility to say, hey, there's something brewing. I think we need to look at this, then we would have known ahead of time. And that's, you never know when a George Floyd's going to happen and how it affects our students, or a Black Lives Matter, and how that affects our students. Or even if it's just some tragedy within our community, and how that affects our students. Having somebody that we can rely on to not have a buffer between us and them, I think, is really important. And so many businesses do that. They have voice of the customer. They pay thousands and thousands of dollars to have focus groups of consumers coming in and telling them what they want. This is the voice of our customer, and it's our students. And I absolutely agree. We should have kids on committees, and maybe that's what's going to happen next year. But if we wait, it will never happen. You have to build it, and they will come, not they'll come and then we'll build it. So, we're building an athletic facility with the expectation that they're going to rise to vacation. We built awesome buildings, and how many stories have we heard about kids saying they feel more school pride because of the facility we created for them? And this is just, this is an esoteric opportunity we are creating for them. And I think it's important, and I don't think there's anything to lose at all. So, I, I hope that it can be supported.
And member Luther, member Rayfield, what's next? And we'll go to member Tyson.
Well, I was just going to say, I think we're doing what we don't want to be doing, as we're just kind of speaking for the students. Maybe what we should do is, this looks, these are two pretty good representations of the ideas that I've brought forth class. Maybe since Principal Caldwell, probably looking for stuff to do. Maybe I should ask some students, I mean, I mean, maybe identify some students and just. and just ask them what they think about these two different balls whole time. And we could use that in some of our collaborations.
Member Tyson?
So, member Luther, I'm curious. So, is it your perception that one student out of 1,200 at our high school will be sat on and asked questions about? Is that what you're seeing it, that that one student... And I just want to say that I don't feel like that's my perception, that students never came and asked any questions. I always had that experience being on a board with our students. If I'm at a game, or if I'm at a dancing function, whatever, they'll ask questions. But is it your perception that that one student versus like having multiple and a whole group organization coming and presenting? So, I'm just confused.
I think we should have one. And we can have kids on every committee right now. We just don't. So, this isn't... that policy isn't something we need to make. So, we can have kids on committees every day.
But we need to get them on.
Right. So, that's an outreach thing, and that's a, hey, we should make this more apparent that it's an option. But it's not creating anything new that they couldn't have taken advantage of. We just need to ask them. But I haven't been asked... I have been asked by parents and kids at lineup, parents at lineup, because that's where I am. And I have not particularly been approached by kids. And like, you end up having your peer group say, oh, I recognize someone. I'm feeling comfortable asking them a question. And that's just, let's throw the kids in our... No, there are not all 1,000 going to go ask one, but maybe like 75 might ask that one. And right now, it's zero. So, I don't perceive they will speak for all students, but they will be a voice, and they'll be an opportunity.
So, you don't see merit in building up students on committees and then kind of launching off that for a rep when they're comfortable?
So, if I may, I think that... What I think we should do with this, which would facilitate, I think, what everybody's thinking, is that we would refer this to the policy committee, who would be able to take it up in September. There will be a student on the policy committee, or two, hopefully. And those students would then have their voice heard in whatever policy we would put forward, to member Rayfield's point. And it would be the starting off point of getting a policy in place in order to put a student on the board. Should we do it? And then, we would get another kick at that can. When that policy would come forward to the board, we would then be able to debate the policy as it was brought forward from the committee, and we would be able to pass it or not pass it.
Member Corcoran?
Well, I just read that South Washington schools, what they do, they have ambassadors, which, reading that, is pretty amazing, that they actually have a group. They're asked to create an ambassador group, so they would get students from NHS, you know, FFA, I mean, all different divisions within the school, and get a group. And then, they actually all get together and they take terms presenting to the board. I mean, which I think is also really valid, to hear the voices from all the different groups. I think that is a fabulous, even as a separate thing. I mean, I love that idea. So.
Clarify Board of Charity. So, please, I'm wrong. So, we will not be able to go ahead with expanding student engagement in the fall? Or we are going to have this plan?
We can expand student engagement on committees at any time they're open in public, except for staff welfare. Staff welfare would not be open.
Right. And I would like to get this student report.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could certainly do that without any change here whatsoever. So, that being said, would we have a motion to refer to the policy committee? The creation of a policy to put a student... a policy together to place a student on the school board, as well as what the parameters around that would be? Like, maybe serving on a committee first, or, you know, those sort of things?
Who?
Say.
All right. We have a motion, a second discussion on motion.
That helps. Would then come back to the board for a complete review before it goes anywhere else?
Right. It would most likely be... the first month would be consideration. Come to board, most likely, the first meeting in October. First reading, discussion, consideration, and approval in the timeline for the...
So, given that, I don't want to miss out on the opportunity for expanding students. Because I think we're just in a waiting game now, because we're pushing policy. So, I don't want that to happen.
So...
They're not bi-ary.
Right. We have a motion on the floor. That discussion's not terminated. This motion, which is a policy to put student on the board itself, and we can take that up as soon as we get through this motion.
But I don't know if I can do this motion if I don't know that.
Can't do that, because it's not on the floor.
Can you wait? Whatever.
We have any further discussion? Member clerk, would you please take your roll call?
Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Kettle?
Aye.
Member Olson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
No.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Luther's votes aye.
Motion passes.
Aye.
We have further discussion on expanding committees?
Do we have any student report?
So, go ahead, member Luther.
I feel like we could answer for those right now.
We can.
Yeah.
I was going to suggest that we, as a board, direct administration to put together a group of students to report to the board, and also, Principal Caldwell, seek out some students to expand their participation on committees.
Member Corcoran?
And I think we can have that ready right away at the start of the year. We think, before September, it's ready to be...
Can I ask a question? Would you like that to be an application process for the committees? Or would you like that to be an appointment process? We can do either.
I'll submit to the board my concept of what that might go home. I don't know that this is an operational piece, not a board governance piece. So, there'll be opportunity if we need to be some feedback over the next couple of months on that. But Jim asked a fair question. We'll need a process for that, identification, elimination, whatever it might be. But then, also the structure for selection of student report. Abroad, we want that to be, and so on and so forth. So, we'll put those pieces together, and we'll be ready at the start of the year.
I find my statement here. I believe that includes eight-nine, seeing nothing on our new business. Review the upcoming calendar dates, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So, who? All those in favor of adjournment, signify by aye.
Aye.